All right, it's five o'clock, so we'll get started. Thank you for everybody who made it here for the work session for the September 2nd council meeting. Before we go through the agenda, Robbie Cantrell with NRCOG is here to speak on this grant opportunity.
I'll go as fast as I can, Carl. I want to make sure that you've got all the information though, so this, I think I've got about seven minutes of your time, if that's okay. All right, so my name is Robbie Cantrell, I'm the Executive Director for the North Central Alabama Regional Council of Governments, or NRCOG, located here in Decatur, and serving the citizens of our region, which is comprised of Morgan, Lawrence, and Coleman Counties. I'm excited to share information with you concerning a funding opportunity from the Economic Development Administration that is supported by the current administration in Washington. Some background on this grant. The EDA fiscal year 2025 Disaster Supplemental Grant Program makes approximately $1.45 billion available to support economic recovery activities in areas that received major disaster declarations because of hurricanes, wildfires, severe storms and flooding, tornadoes, and other natural disasters occurring in calendar years 2023 and 2024. EDA's FY 2025 Disaster Supplemental Notice of Funding, or NOFO, aims to support communities recovering from major disasters and set them on a path to exceed pre-disaster conditions and transform their local economies in new and vibrant ways. This federal funding is available on a rolling basis or until all funds have been obligated. The funding opportunity is realized through three funding pathways. The readiness path is for capacity building and strategic planning projects. The industry transformation path is aimed at coalition-led, multi-project portfolios that transform regional economies through targeted industry development. The implementation path, which I will focus on today, is for standalone construction and non-construction projects to help communities recover from natural disasters and advance recovery and growth. Grant awards for construction projects are expected to range from $2 million to $20 million. Potential infrastructure projects include, but are not limited to, replacing, repairing, or upgrading existing facilities. EDA has five investment priorities: critical infrastructure, workforce, innovation and entrepreneurship, economic recovery resilience, and manufacturing. To be considered for funding under the Disaster Supplemental NOFO, a proposed project must be consistent with EDA investment priority number four: economic recovery resilience. Economic recovery resilience is defined as "economic development planning or implementation projects that enhance the ability of an area to withstand and recover from adverse short-term or long-term changes in economic conditions," including effects from industry contractions or economic impacts from natural disasters. Some of the requirements: Applications must demonstrate how proposed projects align with the Regional Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, or SEDs. NRCOG is a designated Economic Development District, or EDD, through the U.S. Economic Development Administration, EDA, and includes Coleman, Lawrence, and Morgan Counties along with the 24 municipalities. As the Region's EDD, NRCOG is responsible for developing and maintaining a comprehensive economic development strategy through a continuous planning process. A SEDs, which is developed with the guidance of local leaders and the general public, must be updated at least every five years for a region to qualify for EDA grant assistance and is required for EDD designation. The NRCOG Region SEDs was updated in 2022 and will be updated again around 2027. Any critical infrastructure project, such as one to enhance or replace parking, should strive to meet the goals mentioned in the Region's SEDs. Any application for this particular funding opportunity should focus on goal number two, as mentioned in our SEDs, which is "build a resilient and sustainable regional economy that is resilient to economic shocks, pandemics, and natural or man-made disasters." This helps ensure economic resiliency by preparing and protecting the region from natural, man-made, and technological economic shocks. It also creates a diversified economic base to compete in a global market, continues to attract new businesses and industries to the region, and promotes the retention and expansion of existing businesses and industries in the region. This application for funding should also reference three of the other goals in the Region SEDs. Goal one is to build resilient regional businesses through innovation and entrepreneurship. The strategy 1.4 mentions specifically support the continued growth of the Alabama Center for the Arts and other higher education projects, such as the Cook Museum of Natural Science, to further the initiative of establishing a steam-based economy in downtown Decatur. Also, goal three, build a resilient regional workforce ecosystem. And goal four, build resilient infrastructure for the region, including infrastructure for broadband, planes, trains, automobiles, bicycle, and pedestrian facilities, transit ports, water, sewer, drainage, electricity, et cetera. Eligible applicants for, or recipients of, these EDA economic recovery grants include states, counties, cities, or other political subdivisions of a state. Public-private partnerships for public infrastructure are also eligible. To be considered for this particular funding, proposed projects must be located in areas that are covered under a major disaster declaration issued in either calendar year 2023 and/or calendar year 2024. There were two different declarations related to Morgan County during this period. DR-4710-A-L addressed severe storms, straight-line winds, and tornadoes. Morgan County is one of 10 Alabama counties listed with a declaration date of May 5th, 2023, the incident period spanning from March 24th, 2023 through March 27th, 2023. The second is EM-3618-A-L, related to Hurricane Helene. Morgan County is one of 35 Alabama counties listed with a declaration date of September 26th, 2024. This incident period spans from September 22nd, 2024 through September 29th, 2024. Now while this, while projects, like I have mentioned, are eligible, I want to also list the projects that are not eligible under this current funding opportunity. Some of those projects include projects that are primarily residential in nature, for example, housing; projects that create community amenities like swimming pools, zoos, or recreation centers; projects that support casinos or gaming; or projects that support general government functions and supplement operating budgets or replace lost revenue, including lost tax revenue. For this particular funding opportunity, the EDA generally expects to fund up to 80% of the eligible costs of grant assistance provided under this NOFO. NRCOG, as the Economic Development District for the EDA, is prepared to work with the City of Decatur to produce an application for funding for a critical infrastructure project, such as enhanced or new parking related to growth in the downtown area, which will attract more visitors, attract job opportunities, and enhance the overall quality of life for the residents of the city. If you have questions, I'm available.
Thank you, Robbie. Anybody got any questions or comments?
Robbie, can you speak to, when was this fund administration?
This was, I have this, in June, June 13th, 2025 was the last update to the NOFO. I was made aware of it by the Economic Development Representative for the EDA that covers Tennessee, Alabama, and Mississippi a couple of weeks ago.
So, not part of the beautiful deal?
No, no. This is new funding.
And Harvey, we'll have to, we have to, prior resolution apply to that grant, so we'll just see that on future. Anybody got anything else?
Do we know how long it would take to do the grant application and when we would hear back?
I would think no more than four to six weeks to put the application together. And I cannot give you a solid answer on when you would hear back on it. I would anticipate by the end of the year. I believe with this pot of money, since it's on a rolling basis and it's, the funds are available till they're gone, I would anticipate October, November, somewhere in that time range.
I guess we might not find issue with that. I answered a question, I would have said nine days and I would have been wrong?
Well, I mean, it could, at least 90 days. I would say at least 90 days before you hear anything, because this has to go to DC, to Secretary Luttnick's desk, to be approved, so it just takes time to get through that process. But this will be much faster than an application period that has a deadline to it. Like I said, this is on a rolling basis, the applications will be reviewed as they come in, instead of everything coming in at once. So that's why typically on funding projects with federal funds, it takes a long time before you hear anything, it's because they get hit with so many at one time. This is something that is, is rolling, and I don't believe much of the funds have been obligated yet.
And this bucket of money is already approved, it's there?
Yes.
It's not tied into passing the federal budget, or a CR, or anything like that?
As far as I know, the answer is affirmative.
And the thing here is, pretty simple, the application.
Yeah. So, we already received funding from the EDA to prepare applications like this and to provide technical assistance to our communities, so there's no additional cost for this. It's a, to me, it's a why not try?
Thank you, Robbie.
Appreciate you bringing this to us.
Thank you.
Mayor's willing, I know y'all have had conversations about it, so it keeps us up to date, obviously. We were committed to this project, so we'll continue to move forward and look forward to hearing back on this.
Well, thank you all, and thank you all for your service to the city.
Thanks, Robbie. Well, now moving to the agenda, start with the approval of minutes. August 11th, 2025, 4:00 p.m., special call meeting. August 11th, 2025, 5:00 p.m., council work session. August 15th, 2025, 9:30 a.m., special call council meeting. August 18th, 9:00 a.m., council work session. Questions? All right. Felt the period, resolution number 25-211, approved request for on and off term this period, line for the Alufa 168 LLC, doing business as Noria? All right. 2027, built in Southwest, Ketter, Alabama, 3060.
Yeah, this can be located where Red Lobster was, it's going to be a Japanese steakhouse, and they're asking for beer and wine approval.
Any questions? Thank you. Resolution number 25-212, approved MUV expenditure of $2,810,612 for FY '26 boring and trenching contract.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, Council, Jimmy Evans, Decatur Utilities. This will be for the annual boring and trenching contract. This will be for labor, equipment, machinery, and tools to do water, gas, electric installations throughout all of our underground utility work throughout the system. We opened bids on August the 14th, we had two responsive bidders, TJ Construction and Armor Contracting. Armor Contracting was the low bidder and we seek approval.
Any questions? All right, thank you, sir. Resolution 25-213, accept paid-in grant of $375,000 for recycling truck.
Well, what are you doing? Wanda Tyler Landfill and Recycling. Earlier this year, I requested that I apply for this grant, and we got the grant. So, this will pay for one of the recycling trucks that we need to replace in our fleet. We're asking for your approval, so the mayor can sign this agreement, I can get that check.
Always good news.
I know, right?
Any questions on that grant?
Thank you. Thank you.
Good job, hon. All right, resolution 25-214, approved CID HVAC replacement for a police department in the amount of $41,000.
Kurt Johnson, Building Maintenance. We saying we had some funding in the 2025 budget year to go ahead and get this change out done, so we're just asking for approval to go ahead and take care of this this year.
All right, any questions? Thank you. All right, resolution 25-215, approved recreational trails grant for Dinsmore Slough Trail Extension.
Yeah, good evening, Council, this is the grant for the city to do the Dinsmore Slough Trail. The total grant amount will be for $330,880. Please keep in mind that $240,000 is a non-reimbursable expense that's going to be added on to this. That's to remove the fence that's at the Institute of Death and Blind, so the total city investment will be for $322,720, all in.
All right, any questions? Do you know how long that trail is, by chance, how many miles it'd be at?
I'm not sure how long it is.
Senator or Dr. Brunn?
Yeah.
All right, resolution number 25-216, adopt annual transportation plan for the Rebuild Alabama Act funds.
Good evening. This resolution is to assign the estimated revenues for the Rebuild Alabama Act for road projects needed in the city. Let me clarify, this is not the only resurfacing that the city will see in its budget this year. This is a requirement that's in the Legislative Act for the city to adopt and publish the plan for the tax revenues generated by this act. This year, the revenues forecast is for $425,000, and the projects selected are shown in the resolution attachment on your agenda. We have, we have included an overage allowance for these projects as well, and if you have any technical resurfacing questions, our city engineer, Carl Pruitt, is here to respond.
Any questions on that?
So Carl says from Long Island, the address of Point Mall, that's a model, so how much will, for those four land miles, how much will that go? Well, you got five, when it's good.
Probably $350,000.
To do that?
A land, well, for the whole land.
About $90,000 land mile now.
Sixty, sixty-five, somewhere around there.
Thank you. Thank you, Charlie.
All right, resolution number 25-217, approved change order for construction of Point Mall or Event Center.
Hey, y'all, all right, so this first one, for the Point Mall Event Center, is roughly $37,000, and it is to replace conduit that was destroyed in the demolition of the bathrooms at the event center. The contractor working on the plumbing, he was working off of the original architectural design, and the conduit was not clearly depicted in that design, and therefore the damage, they are not liable, and this is to continue the construction at that site.
Got it. Any questions? So constructions?
It's halted until this is approved.
Any questions on that one? All right, we read the next one. Resolution number 25-218, approved Decatur Recreation Center for floor construction, change order number three.
This change order actually includes 21 total change orders for the rec center. The total amount is additional $294,806. This is, this plan is for this to come out of the contingency, so it's not a increase in the total project, but it is an increase that will come out of the contingency. Most of this is due to poor soil and weather delays from the last few months, and Most of this is due to poor soil and weather delays from the last few months, and you can see, if you go through each one, where those, where those stand out. Would you guys like for me to go through each change order amount?
I don't know, so anyone's got any specific questions?
The total document is 284 pages, if you'd like to go through.
Did the major picture?
Surprisingly, not, he did not.
So, resolution 25-219, approved DASH, by the smart recreation software.
Yeah, so this is a proposal for our Parks and Rec Department to enhance our software opportunities. The total cost of this is just north of $10,000 for a one-year agreement. The total is $10,536 for one year. They initially wanted a three-year deal, but we were able to negotiate a one-year deal. And just to be clear, this would enhance our registrational opportunities, and it would give us the infrastructure for people to register for classes, camps, sports leagues, special events. Also gives us an opportunity to increase our membership opportunities, go digital at our concession stands, put new POS systems at our concession stands, increase our communication with our customers and target market. Also gives us an online portal for account management, online registration, online reservation, league management, membership, and member cards. This overall gives us an opportunity to increase our operational abilities as a department and have more visibility and transparency on our revenues moving forward.
I have a question with that. So, if we're going to increase everything when it comes to operations, things like that, what are we going to do about staffing? Have you had, has anybody reached out to you about the campaign yet? Because I know that I've seen several phones saying that we're going to shut down attractions for May, and things like that, and it's happened several times this summer.
Correct.
Well, what are we going to do? Is there a plan in place for next year's season? Obviously, that won't be my problem next year.
Yes. So, in the past 30 days, we have reached out to the co-op at Austin High School and Decatur High School. We're trying to increase our offerings for the student population and people that are pursuing part-time jobs. We're hoping to increase our part-time intent labor to help subsidize those issues. With these opportunities right here, it allows us to be more digital-focused, which would allow our staff to, it actually relieve a burden for a lot of our staff, especially full-time staff, so it should free up some people to be able to help in other capacities instead of having to answer phones and manage physical paper documents.
Perfect. Have you worked with DASH in the past?
If you look at the attachments, there's a reference list of every Parks and Rec Department in the United States that uses DASH. I do demos with probably three or four different recreational softwares, including Civic Plus, which some, and the rec desk, which are other local municipalities use. According to my research, DASH comes highly recommended, and I feel very confident about what they offer.
Any other questions? Thank you. Well, that is the end of the agenda for next week's September 2nd meeting. Anybody got anything else? As a reminder, tomorrow's a lucky day, so I encourage everybody to get out and book that return. Thank you.